Hi.
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 We good? We don't know, but we're gonna pretend we're good. We're probably fine.
We're probably fine.
I am Sylvie Rinaldi.
I'm Karina Tipton.
And this is
Town Hall Tailgate.
It's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
We are good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, today is September 13th and we are tailgating the planning board meeting here in Montgomery, New York.
That's right. There's a person driving circles in the parking lot, so just ignore him.
We don't know if he wants to be a part of Town Hall Tailgate.
A special guest. It's fine.
It's fine.
Yeah, so there was a planning board meeting. There was only two items on the agenda. It was a very fast meeting, although you would not know it because it's kind of late now. I guess we were just hanging out and talking.
We pre-tailgate, we pre-gamed our tailgate.
We pre-gamed our tailgate. Yes. So there's two things on the agenda. The first thing was a informational meeting for an accessory dwelling unit, which is what happens when you build a small apartment or tiny house behind your regular house.
Right.
And it's over on Walchell Road. It was just, nobody came for the information. The applicant wasn't there. And it was referred to the building department.
And the historical review board.
Historical review board.
And that was it for that.
It was pretty good. Yeah.
Um, let's talk about the big one.
Yes.
So I'm gonna start it and then you are going to talk mostly about it because this is your cup of tea.
Because I have lived it.
Yeah.
In Montgomery.
Yes. So on the agenda tonight was RDM, which for those that don't remember is a warehouse, two warehouses that are proposed to be built on Beaver Dam Road. And it's kind of a catty corner piece of property that has frontage on Beaver Dam and frontage on Neely Town. And this was the company that went up and requested that the Montgomery Town Board give them a more, a waiver to the more, to the warehouse moratorium so that they could start the process to build their warehouse during our warehouse moratorium. And the waiver was granted. So since then, they have moved on to the planning board and this is an update on where that has stand because it's been a couple of months since we've even heard from them. So Karina spoke to this in the public comment just for a few minutes, but it has a good background as to what happened from the moratorium proposal, what happened in the last planning board meeting and where we are today.
Right. So the town board had a, you know, in order to grant a moratorium on the warehouse moratorium law, which has expired.
Do we know what?
It was end of August.
Okay. Recently expired.
Recently expired.
Yeah.
August 30th. It was August 30th. That was smooth, right?
Thanks Peanut Gallery.
Um, Peanut for short. Uh, so. So yeah, so the more, the warehouse moratorium did expire on August 30th, so it's no longer the law. But when it was the law, the process was, is there would be an application to the town board for this waiver to the moratorium. The town board would review it. There would be a public hearing. They were required to hold a public hearing. And the public would have a chance to respond to the waiver and then the town board would make their determination. And they've done this three times. Every warehouse that asked for a waiver received a waiver. The thing that is notable about RDM is the plans that they gave the town board did not include this 300 parking spot lot that they want to have on Beaver Dam Road.
Which is a different piece of property.
It's a different piece of property. So they gave them a one lot with two big warehouses on it and said, we want to do these two big warehouses. We need a waiver.
To the town board.
To the town board. The public reviewed it. We had a public comment. Sylvie and I spoke on it. And then they flipped their application to the planning board. And in that period of time, they added a second lot onto it. And that included a parking lot with over 300 parking spots on it.
For trucks.
For trucks.
It wasn't a 300 space car.
Cars, but for trucks. And also an access route onto Beaver Dam Road for cars to take.
All of, it was actually from the original site plan, that was, um, I thought was like an emergency exit.
Emergency truck exit.
There was supposed to be some kind of emergency truck exit that went from the new, from the piece of property off onto Beaver Dam. But when they flipped it to the planning board, that became the entrance for all the cars, all of the cars onto Beaver Dam Road.
So you're talking about.
All of the employees.
Right.
For both warehouses. That was a major change that was not part of the original plans from the town board.
And when I looked at the waiver request, I was like, alright, I don't want some more big warehouses. I get it. I don't want speculative warehouses, which these are speculative warehouses.
Right.
It's on Neely Town Road. I think we have too many warehouses and I spoke to that. If I had known about this Beaver Dam access, if I had known about this huge parking lot for trucks, like trucks are going to idle there. Trucks are going to back up with their beepers. There's residents right across the street from this warehouse parking lot now. And that, I would have spoken to that strongly.
Right.
And I think a lot of other people would have as well.
Parking lot is essentially up against 84 and right on the other side of 84 is the Malley Farm and then all of the Twaddle Farmhouses that are just right there.
Right.
That.
And just a short stretch down the road, there's, there's three houses that people live in also towards the end of Neely Town.
Right.
Beaver Dam and Neely Town.
So since then, we asked for the town board to look at what happened, for the planning board to talk to each other. And then it's been
Radio silence.
Radio silence. We haven't heard anything. It's been weeks.
Yeah.
Until today.
Right. So my, my comment was, is that even though the warehouse moratorium has expired, the application that went into the planning board went in during the warehouse moratorium under a warehouse moratorium waiver. And because it was out of compliance with what was presented originally to the town board and that the public had a chance to review, the planning board and the town board should reject this application and have them restart the planning board application process.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna write a letter to the town board with the same information in it.
So, I mean, it seems like they were like a loophole to me, right? That's what it seems like they were trying, I don't know if they were, I cannot say what was intentional or what was not, but ultimately, we all know that it takes months and months and months for a site plan this large to get approved.
Oh, yeah.
So all they wanted was the moratorium to get the head start. They were gonna do whatever they wanted to do after the moratorium ended, but they got the town to give them the head start and then they changed it down the road. And I think that Montgomery needs to be slightly ahead of the game here and say, wait a second, that's not what you proposed. Back to the drawing board. You were given this waiver because you were supposed to be good colleagues with the town of Montgomery. That was part of the presentation that the town board gave us is that these were supposed to be, this company was supposed to be professional and, you know, what's, I don't, can't think of the word, but like,
Yeah.
Play well in the sandbox is what's coming to my mind.
Right.
And, and this is not how.
This is not. This is throwing sand in Montgomery's face in the sandbox.
Yes.
And honestly, like, this is something that I think many of us are frustrated at, those of us who've been going to these meetings for a long time. I can only imagine how the board and the board staff feel about this. But this is, this is a corporation intentionally or not, that took advantage of Montgomery. And Montgomery is not calling them to scratch.
Right. Like, where's our backbone?
Right. And if we don't call them to scratch, other people are going to do the same thing.
Right.
And other people have been doing the same thing.
Yeah.
And that's why they knew they could get away with it intentionally or not. Once they realized there was an error, they just kept going forward with it because they knew that it was not going to hurt them.
Right.
Yeah. And so that's what I said in the public comment section.
Disappointing.
Yeah.
So what's next for RDM? Assuming, well, I mean, they're moving forward.
They're moving forward. So because it's been so long, the planning board reaffirmed that they are going to be the lead agency. They reaffirmed that this is, that this application requires a positive declaration under the secret process, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. A positive declaration doesn't mean that it's good.
Right.
A positive declaration, and I'm gonna be colloquial here, a positive declaration means that we are positive under the current situation, that this is going to cause negative impacts to the environment and the people that live around it.
Right.
A negative declaration would say, we've checked for negative impacts. There, we're, we're negative on negative impacts. It's a double negative situation. It's a very poorly written thing.
So they're positive it will be bad for the environment.
Yeah. Yeah. And so the next step is, is to do the environmental impact statement process, which will measure how bad it is for the, for the environment. So the planning board and the applicant can then work together to minimize the negative impacts to the environment and to the community. There's a community portion in this as well.
Right.
It's not just for like the physical environment.
So like, can we, can you give me an example of something that would normally be identified in the environmental impact statement that could be mitigated due to public comment or planning board feedback?
And there are a number of categories that are required, that you have to look at. And those are water, energy, air. Noise is usually one of them. Traffic, impacts to your infrastructure. So in this case, you know, we were talking about this parking lot that's going out onto Beaver Dam. So like a specific impact that they might have to evaluate is what is the impact of these cars exiting onto Beaver Dam Road? And then they would have to do a traffic study.
Right.
To prove how bad the impacts are and what they have to do to minimize them.
Right.
And I keep saying minimize or mitigate because we all know that these impacts are not going to go away, right? If you do any kind of physical built environment, you're going to cause an impact to the environment. So it's really, you're coming up with a compromise plan that is supposed to minimize it.
Right. It can, it can never get everything off the table, but it can minimize.
Right.
One example could be like, I'm thinking in Medline where the trucks are not supposed to turn right. So you create a left turn only type exit. I'm not saying this was done for RDM. I'm just saying that in other things I've seen, that would be one example of a way to minimize the impact of traffic is to direct traffic in one direction versus another, right?
Another.
We see those in Amazon too.
Yes.
There's certain ones.
Certain traffic controls that are required.
Right.
I think Amazon also has, no, Amazon doesn't have it, but one suggestion was to control the runoff off of the parking lot, was to have a pervious surface for their parking lot.
Right.
So instead of having a lot of stormwater to handle, because it's a huge warehouse, it's a huge volume of stormwater from the parking lot in the warehouse, to have an a pervious parking lot surface so the stormwater would just go into the ground.
Amazon did not choose that, right?
No, they actually argued that the maintenance would be too difficult.
Right. And if I, my, remember correctly, that goes to their water treatment plant and the backup if the water treatment plant fails.
Stormwater goes offsite.
Okay.
Yeah. Stormwater just goes into the Tinbrook.
Goes right into the Tinbrook.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna.
Some stormwater basins. But yeah, it just goes to the Tinbrook.
Okay. Yeah. So for the next steps for RDM, what they created is a, um, a document called a draft scope.
Right.
So tell me what that is.
So this, it's the scope of the draft environmental impact statement.
Okay.
So basically, what the planning board is doing right now in coordination with the applicant is they're kind of brainstorming on everything that they have to look into.
Okay.
And so they'll have this draft scoping document that describes every section that needs to be studied, evaluated and written about in the environmental impact statement. They're going to release that draft scope to the public and then they'll have a public hearing, which is, it's called a public scoping session. And that's when we all come with our lists of everything that we're concerned about and we ask them specifically what they need to study.
Right.
So people that are concerned about this warehouse, neighbors on Beaver Dam, people that frequent Neely Town Road, you should start making a list. You should be like, I'm actually really concerned about the fact that the Unified trucks back up across the road and maybe they're gonna block the RDM warehouse driveway. And what happens if the tractor trailers have to go out on the Beaver Dam Road? Like, that's the kind of question you can ask to be included in the scoping document.
Like, one question that I have is to make sure that if Cardinal Health, what's the full buildout of Cardinal Health?
Right.
Full buildout of UNFI. I don't know about Morabido. What happens if there's a full buildout of Morabido propane? And then we have RDM as a full buildout. Are the traffic studies for all of those?
They'll have to do a new traffic study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And because those are all, all the things that I listed are actually just on the corner of Beaver Dam and Neely Town Road.
Yes.
Um, and I just, I cannot wrap my head around this like rural intersection that we have right there.
I know.
Accommodating all that traffic.
Yeah. Something I'm concerned about is the stormwater, right?
Yeah.
I think, so Beaver Dam flooded in the most recent storm. Um, and then on top of that, you've got those big wetlands behind there. Like, UNFI had to build kind of around some wetlands. There's actually an accident when they were building UNFI and the wetlands started to drain and they had to like repair that.
I don't know if there's official wet, wetlands area.
Delineated wetlands.
In RDM, but I know there's a pond back there.
Yeah, I think there is. And actually, there's like, in our comprehensive plan, there's all of these buffering requirements for ponds and vernal pools. A vernal pool is like a seasonal pool that frogs live in, which we have a lot of at Montgomery.
We can hear them.
They're everywhere. Yeah. So like, this is your, this is your homework assignment. You need to start making a list.
Um, so this document is going. This document is going to be on the planning board website probably in the next couple of days. And they're gonna have a public hearing scheduled for October 12th.
Which is a Tuesday, not a normal Monday.
Yeah.
It's because of Columbus Day.
Right. The other thing that they just wanted to, um, they reported in the meeting is that the only people that will be officially notified by mail are neighbors within 500 feet
Right.
of the perimeter of the property for RDM, which because it's a rural road, is like four houses.
Maybe tops.
I think it's that's, I think I'm being generous. We think it's one. One house will be notified about this project, which Karina and I have talked about in the past, is a dismal standard for the town of Montgomery.
Yeah.
For notification.
I think it's the state law. I have to look that up. I think that's the state requirement. The town could do more. It's a home real state. The town can always do more than the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's all we have for the planning board. Um, anything else on that before we move to our, um, our secret next topic?
No. Bonus topic.
Bonus topic. Um, so today is Monday. So at the end of last week, which was, do we know what day that was?
Yes, it was Thursday the 9th.
On Thursday the 9th.
My husband's birthday.
Oh, and you kept the meeting on your husband's birthday.
On my way home from Taekwondo. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks for the sacrifice, Mike, that you made.
Yeah.
So we attended a joint public hearing between the Village of Montgomery and the Town of Montgomery boards on what is being called the Butler Annexation. Is that the right way to describe it?
Yeah.
Um, which I'm going to give you a brief overview of. And we are going to tailgate that, even though it's a couple of days after.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this was a meeting where all of the Village of, um, Montgomery trustees were present and all of the Town of Montgomery official council members were present. And then they had a public hearing that were joint between the village and the town residents. Because Butler Trucking, which is the truck stop that is right at the sign of Welcome to Montgomery on 211 by the airport.
Construction equipment. They have a lot with construction equipment in it. Yeah.
They proposed, I believe it was last year, to purchase a piece of property on the opposite side of the road that was zoned as light industry or I1 to move their trucking and to expand their, their, uh, their operations. And that went through the Town Planning Board. And my understanding of the history of that is that the town engineer was in favor of that. All of those pieces of property were town jurisdiction. The town engineer was in favor of doing this move. And it ended up going, the Town Planning Board sent it to the zoning board of appeals because what Butler wanted to use the site for was outdoor storage for their construction equipment.
Right.
Which was in the zoning laws excluded from light industry. And the zoning board of appeals said, that is accurate, is not appropriate to put Butler on that piece of property for that use. Right? I wanna, I was just like making sure I get all my facts right. So since that time, what has happened is that that project instead, that piece of property is now up to be re, have, how do you say?
To be annexed.
To be annexed to the Village of Montgomery so they can change the zoning law so Butler can move there.
Right.
And that was the public hearing. I think I got that right.
Yes.
So in the Town of Montgomery comprehensive plan, that piece of property was not up to be rezoned for the heavy kind of, uh, heavy industrial that Butler wanted. It was to be rezoned for high tech, which is even lighter of an industry from what I can tell than.
That's the intention.
Yeah, intention. So instead, they're annexing this to be part of the, they want to annex this to be part of the village so the village can rezonate to be heavy industry. Um, and this was the public hearing on it. And, um, what I found interesting just is that, number one, the perception that I got as a member of the public as that this was a done deal. Um, I, I have to say that in just full honesty. A comment that was made by Steve Breschah alluded to the fact that this was a done deal. Um, I, I was disappointed in that. The second thing that I thought was interesting is when I went up to speak as a member of the public, I had a handful of questions about what was going on. Um, and I, I, it was told to me by Mr. Breschah, who was running the meeting, um, that public comment sessions were not meant for questions and answers. They're only meant for the public to comment. And I think that I was a little taken aback because in the Town of Montgomery meetings, our town board answers questions. And I think that I ended up essentially turning to the Town of Montgomery Board and to Brian and asking my questions. And Brian answered me.
Right.
Um, and I have to say that like, I think that I was, even though I was not saying things that were necessarily in favor of this project, and I didn't necessarily like all of Brian's answers, I have a lot of respect for the fact that he was able to answer my questions for better or for worse, instead of just telling me that I wasn't allowed to ask them.
Right.
That, that just did not sit right with me. Um, I felt like my questions were important and they should have been addressed. And I'm glad that Brian did, even though I didn't like all his answers.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
So at the end of this public hearing, um, only myself, Don Berger spoke as well, um, they closed it. So the other thing that I noticed is like in the Town of Montgomery meetings, when a public comment session has happened in person, they usually keep the session open for like a week or so for people to have watched, to like watch it like we have, and then write in letters. Bam, right at the end of the day, the public comment was closed. So if you did not show up for that meeting, that was your only chance.
And I think it's notable also that there was no live streaming of the meeting either.
No.
Don was there with his cell phone.
Right.
He streamed the meeting, but they had a full presentation by the applicant.
Right.
A full pitch was made to the town board and the village board.
Yeah.
And there was no opportunity for the public who was not able to come, who may be quarantining because they had a family exposure to COVID or something like that, there was no opportunity for those people to show up and get that information remotely. And I, I think that that was a, a gutsy move in the time of COVID. And I think it really speaks to how valuable they felt the public participation was going to be. And coupled with the fact that they closed the hearing immediately, it just reinforces my, my feelings on that.
Yeah. I, I, I think that, um, this is a chance, and I realize that these are independent, you know, town councils or village, you know, village trustees versus town councils. But, um, it was a total culture shock for me to sit in a village meeting and not be, essentially felt like my voice wasn't heard at all.
Right.
I think, like, they didn't want to hear what I had to say. It didn't really matter what I had to say. They didn't want to answer my questions. And then nobody else, they were going to, they weren't going to solicit any other help, um, any other requests because there was, the public hearing was then closed. So.
And I'm, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to make it in time to speak because like I said, I was coming from Taekwondo.
Yeah, of course.
But one of the things, I mean, I feel like the village trustees probably felt like this is their decision. I mean, it's a joint decision on paper, but I feel like they may feel like they have more weight in this because they're the ones that are accepting the use. They're going to have to provide water and sewer if they come in.
Right.
But at the same time, this matters to town residents as well because we're losing a high-tech parcel of land that a huge company might want to come in and build on.
Right.
And so, I mean, I know that that sounds counter to things that we've said in the past, like we want to protect our local businesses and Butler is a local business.
Right.
And we do want them to have a good home.
Right.
Right. But the town residents have an opportunity to speak as well because what you're talking about is a shifting of potential tax ratables from the town to the village.
Right.
And the town had it slated for a totally different use with a totally different tax bracket.
Yeah.
So that's just something to consider.
It just felt like they were, they didn't get what they wanted, so they're just gonna go through this other hoops to, to get it. And that, again, doesn't sit right with me.
No, I like the thing that you said at the end of your questions because I got there just, you know, I heard the, you told me about it at the end and I watched the RPM video afterwards.
Right.
I liked how, what you said, which was plainly like, you trust the Town Planning Board and you trust the Town ZBA. And this decision was going against their recommendations.
That's exactly how I felt. And I, and you're right. Thank you for, for reminding me of that last point is that the Town Planning Board and the Town Zoning Board of Appeals decided that Butler Construction should not be on that piece of property based on the zoning that it was. And the town board has not chosen, has chosen not to change that zoning to be Butler.
Yeah.
So I think that we need to honor what that is and not let the village have it for what they want. Now, I realize, and I have to say this in good faith, I believe that one of the reasons why, well, I believe, I am under the impression, one of the reasons why the village wants Butler to move is because it's right at the entrance to their village. And I get that, right? Because I don't live that far away either from that location, but I'm just under, unconfused as to why Butler could not find a piece of property that was appropriately zoned for what they want to do. That was my question. It wasn't that I don't want them to move. It's not that I don't want the entrance to be beautiful. I'm just not understanding why we couldn't find a piece of property that was appropriate for them. That's how I feel about it. The last thing that we should talk about is the pickleball.
Yeah. So let me cover this one because I am a Village of Montgomery resident. So this hits me in the pocketbook.
Yeah.
The Village of Montgomery trustees approved $13,000 for closed circuit cameras.
We should, we stayed the whole rest of the meeting after the, just because we wanted to see what was on this agenda. So this, now we're reporting on the Village of Montgomery trustees meeting.
Yeah.
Because we were just too curious to leave after the public hearing closed.
So village residents, the trustees are, are spending $13,000 on closed circuit cameras to monitor the pickleball courts behind the senior center, which I did not know was such a problem of like, I don't know, scofflaws, those kids. I'm not sure what's going on down there, but apparently it's a very big issue.
It's not.
Mayor Breschah said it's a big issue.
Yeah. Um, I got home and someone in my family made a comment like, I think two Nest cameras is a lot less expensive than $13,000.
And I also.
It was a little snarky, but I'm also like, that's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, $13,000.
Especially when the town entertained a grant application for something like $25,000 for like four or eight traffic cameras, right? Do you remember that one? Like, this doesn't seem commensurate. I don't know if they went out for bid. They didn't discuss the process at all.
No.
I don't know if they got any bids for it. I don't know if the cameras are going to be hooked up to the police department.
Yeah, they didn't say where they're gonna go.
They're just gonna be on tape. And maybe if something bad happens, they can look at it later. I don't know the answers to these questions.
Yeah, I.
These are questions that were not asked during the meeting.
And the other thing was that there was no opportunity for the public to comment on this particular piece of the agenda because the public comment for the meeting took place at the beginning before all the agenda items were done. So after, and then they just decided on it and after the public comment. So I would have like, you know, you probably would have liked to have some questions or comments on it, but you were absolutely not given the chance to do it.
Nope. It would have been out of order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, Village of Montgomery, you are spending $13,000. It's been approved on pickleball security.
I hope we get some good YouTube videos out of it.
My God. We should foil for footage.
The Village of Montgomery can have like a TikTok.
Foil for the footage? I want to make sure.
Pickleball mishaps in Montgomery.
Can we, can, can we foil for the footage because it's?
I think so.
Yeah. And then, um, and then see if people are cheating.
Pickleball cheaters. Amazing.
Sorry.
If, if we become, if the Village of Montgomery becomes a TikTok influencer, those cameras are gonna pay for themselves. Probably we should go.
Yeah, I think it's probably. Our audience is like shaking their head like, it's time to get off, guys.
Hey Sylvie, where can I find you this week?
Hi, my goodness. Okay. So I am on social media on the internet. My Facebook is Sylvie Rinaldi for Montgomery Town Board because I am running for Montgomery Town Board. And you are too.
I am too. Yeah.
It's the November 2nd election. Early voting starts October 23rd through 31st. Our early voting location is the Montgomery Senior Center for everybody, but then on November 2nd, it's your normal voting location. Um, polls are open, I think on the norm, on November 2nd from 6:30 to 9:00.
Yeah.
You potentially will see us, well, you will for sure. If you would like to come out and meet us in person, we will be at the Walden Harvest Festival on September 25th. That's a Saturday from 11:00 to 5:30. We're gonna have a booth. We're gonna have some giveaways.
Come by after the All County Volunteer Firefighters Association Parade.
What time does that parade start?
1:00, I think.
Oh, it's so many things.
Right in the middle of Harvest Fest.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So that's where I'm going to be. You can also find my, um, information at rinaldformontgomery.com. Where can I see more of you this week?
So I will also be on the internet. I am at Karina for Montgomery on Facebook and also the internet and also Instagram. Um, and I'll also be at Harvest Fest.
Yep.
Yeah. So, and also at the town board meeting on Thursday.
Oh, yeah. Is that this?
Is that this Thursday? No. Yes, yes.
We have, we'll be, we'll tailgate this. Well, I know I'm tailgating. Is it this Thursday?
I'm checking my political calendar. Yes. It's the town board work session at 7:00 PM.
Yes.
Be there or be square.
Tailgate date. And soon to be announced is our 20th episode tailgate party for Town Hall Tailgate.
Yeah.
Coming soon.
Do you think we can do the 20th episode in 20 minutes?
No. Because it's gonna be like. Oh.
The IDA has a meeting also.
I haven't seen the, I haven't looked for the.
I know it's on it. It's, the IDA meeting is tomorrow, it's tomorrow at one. Um, so it's in the middle of the day, which is kind of a drag.
They do livestream it though.
They do livestream it, but this is the presentation for the Cardinal Health application for their warehouse expansion. So, you know, that would make a pilot project number twenty-two in the town if that goes forward. So you should take a look and see what you think.
I'll watch it.
Me too.
I have the kids, so I won't be there.
Understandable.
But I'm gonna watch. Alright, everybody, have a good night.
Have a good night. Oh, don't forget farmer's market this week.
Oh, is it the last one or we have?
I think it's the second to the last one, but I think they're on a reduced schedule at this point. So it is this week. Take a look.
Alright, bye.